All right. Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us today. I am Councilman John Bullock, Chairman of the Finance and Performance Committee. We're going to jump right in. Wanted to definitely recognize the members of our committee who are with us today. So we have Councilmember Felicia Porter, Councilmember Danielle McCray. Also joining us, we have Councilmember Oda Ramos, Staff of the Committee Margery Curran. Thank you for being here as always. We also have a number of agency representatives who are here. This is by no means an exhaustive list, but for names that I have in front of me, we have Finance Laura Lawson, Pedro Aponte, and Ben Broch. Capital Budget, we have Nicole Stewart, Sarah Palnem, Christine Ahern. For Baltimore City Public Schools, Mary Ann Cox, Maureen Gersberg, and Melissa Broom. And from ARPA, Shamaya Kearney, Elizabeth Tatum. And also, see, we have Dominic MacLally from the Mayor's Office. Thank you for joining us, along with Tiffany Macklin from the Council President's Office and other staff. So again, thank you for being here today. We're going to go ahead and jump right in. So today, we are doing our Legislative Oversight 21003 quarterly budget briefings from our agency representatives, including the City's Bureau of Budget and Management Research, the Capital Budget, and Baltimore City Public School System. I do want to note that I know that some of these numbers are going to be preliminary, so we do keep that in mind as we are at this point. But just for the sake of transparency, I think it's important for us to have as much information as possible in front of the council. So again, bear with us knowing that some of these numbers are preliminary, but at the same time, very critical for our understanding of where we are right now in the city's budget. So thank you. All right. So let's turn it over to Finance.
That was the most important thing I was going to say all afternoon. Wonderful. Thank you so much for having us here today to talk with you all about where we ended fiscal '23 on the general fund side. Again, we're going to walk through some of our preliminary numbers. Obviously, as Councilman Bullock mentioned, these numbers do change as we go through the city's year-end audit process and wrapping up the books. But these are preliminary based off of where we were in the middle of September. Before I dive into the slides, I do just want to take a couple of moments and introduce a couple of members of my staff who may help me out with answering a couple of questions. Ben Broch is the Deputy Budget Director. He oversees the expenditure team. And Pedro Aponte is our Assistant Budget Director. He oversees revenue and long-range projections for the city. So again, thank you and looking forward to talk through these numbers with you. As we go through the general fund, I'm going to start by just giving you a sense of the high-level numbers and kind of where we ended the year. And then we'll break down the general fund, looking first at revenue, and go through areas where we saw different levels of variation in the fiscal '24 budget. And then we'll go through expenditures and talk about where we saw key variances on the expenditure side by agency. So first, in terms of our big highlights. So overall, preliminarily, we're projecting that the general fund will end fiscal '23 with a surplus just over $90 million. Now, I will say, this is a higher number than what I presented the last time I was before Ways and Means when we were mid-year through fiscal '23. That $90 million surplus is driven by a $31.5 million surplus on the revenue side and a $58.9 million surplus on the expenditure side. Essentially, throughout the fiscal year, we ended revenue pretty much where we thought we would be in this $30 to $40 million surplus range. The expenditure surplus was higher than what we had expected throughout the fiscal year. That surplus on the revenue side is primarily driven by continued strength on the transfer and recrodation tax side, as well as income tax receipts received by the city. On the expenditure side, the primary driver of that surplus is from contractual and non-personnel spending within agency budgets. We know through going through the deliberations around the fiscal '24 budget that there was a lot of discussion regarding vacancies and what that's doing to the city's budget. When we look at these year-end numbers, we are seeing that most of the savings on our personnel costs are being offset by some other type of spending related to vacant positions. And that's a combination of overtime, severance or leave payouts that we pay when folks leave, as well as assumed vacancies that we are assumed savings that we already have factored into the budget from vacant positions. When we look at how these variance rates sort of stack up from a percentage perspective, the variance on the revenue side was about 1.5% when we compare what was assumed in the budget to actual revenues. On the expenditure side, we were just under 3%. So this slide just kind of gives you a sense of what these look like, what the budget to actual numbers look like stacked up against each other. So with that, let's break down some of the revenue numbers in a little more detail. In terms of good news from some of these revenue numbers, we continue to see that overall, the city's housing market is strong. So in, you know, the city, like other parts of the country, experienced the real estate boom coming out of COVID when interest rates were at their historic lows. What we're seeing is coming out of that period, and as we've moved into interest rates increasing and the real estate market cooling a bit, those properties are continuing to hold their value, which again, is contributing to overall strength when we look at the assessed values of properties and what that means for revenue when property is sold. The other piece of good news that we're seeing on the revenue side is that although high interest rates have negative impacts in some other areas, this is an area where the city gets, receives earnings from its, from short-term, from investments on the cash that we hold as a city. And during that period of record-low, record-low interest rates, we were receiving almost nothing in terms of that revenue source. And that has really rebounded in fiscal '23 and is projected to continue as we look into fiscal '24. In terms of some other findings and things that we have to take into consideration, on the income tax side, as I mentioned, it is an area of continued strength for the city's overall budget. But when we look at the regular income tax receipts, those are, those grew by just 0.4% from fiscal '23 over fiscal '22. And so we are seeing that the growth there is slowing down quite a bit. And one thing to note is that in the fiscal '23 budget, there was an assumption that we would utilize fund balance to cover some of our pay-go-capital costs. And we were able, we did not have to tap into fund balance in fiscal '23 based off of, based off of the actual revenue trends. So this slide here just shows you what some of the actual numbers look like when we go into different categories. I'm going to break these down into a little bit more specifics for you. So on this slide, we can see that the top three revenue streams that generated surplus in fiscal '23 were recrodation and transfer taxes. That generated a $50.1 million surplus. Interest earnings realized a $36.9 million increase. And income tax realized a $19.2 million increase, all above the budgeted assumptions. Those surpluses sum up to be about $106 million. Those surpluses are partially offset by charges for city services that came in about $3.5 million under budget. Sanitation and waste removal charges came in $5.6 million under budget. And property taxes came in $18 million under budget assumptions. Those deficits, and so when we look at sort of what that looks like from a different view, you can see that the overall magnitude of revenues that came in at a surplus position exceeded what we saw from those revenue streams that ended with a deficit position.
Really quickly, just want to note that we've been joined by Council President Nick Mosby. And then also, I know we'll get to this in a second, but I see the transfer and recrodation tax. I was looking at Councilmember Ramos and thinking about the Forward Housing Trust Fund. So I know, I know that'll come up as well. So please keep going.
Wonderful. So as we, as we talk in more specifics about some of these revenue streams that had variations, first for the transfer and recrodation, transfer and recrodation taxes. So as I mentioned in the opening, we are seeing that overall property values in the city for residential property have increased. In fiscal '22, the average sale price for a residential property was $250,000. That was up to about $252,419 in fiscal[658.94][658.94]'23. So because these taxes are assessed based off of the value of the property, that the fact that our properties are holding their higher values that we saw coming out of the real estate boom are contributing to the strength that we're seeing in this revenue source. The top three neighborhoods with the most sales in the last quarter of fiscal '23 were Canton, Beller, Edison, and Riverside. The next item up is investment earnings. So in fiscal '23, we assumed a very small budget in terms of revenue of what we would receive from investment earnings. We had assumed that we'd only realize about $1 million from this revenue stream. And it actually came in at about $38 million. The big thing to note there is that this revenue went down to zero when interest rates were at their, were at their low. And so in the fiscal '23 budget, there was still uncertainty in regards to what the Fed was going to do around interest rates and what that would do for the city's investment earnings and how that would impact, especially how investors were coming to government bonds for, to look for different investments. This has been an area where we saw a lot of strength throughout fiscal '23. And we do, this is an area where the budget was increased significantly in fiscal '24 to reflect this trend. Next up is income tax. So income tax generated about a $19.2 million surplus at the, based off of our preliminary estimates. As I was mentioning in the intro, the total income tax received by the city in terms of regular income tax that's paid by filers increased by about 4%. The other thing that's of note with it as we look at income taxes, that the city's total share of the statewide income tax pool is declining. So in fiscal '22, we represented about 1.67% of the state's overall collections. We're down to 1.6% based off of these fiscal, based off of the fiscal '23 data. And that's reflective of fewer, an overall reduction in the number of filers in the city. What's helping us on the income tax side is income tax, income tax receipts that are paid for sort of other items that are outside of what we think of as like regular income tax. When we look at fiduciary returns and unallocated withholdings, both of those items are up. So the receipts for fiduciary returns were up by about 2.9 million or 24%. And the unallocated withholdings were up by about 7 million or 71% compared to the prior year. Now shifting gears and talking about the revenue streams where we saw deficits compared to our assumptions in the budget. The first item is charges for central city services. We had assumed a budget of about $16.5 million. The preliminary year-end number was 13 million, so that's a difference of about $3.2 million. This is the overhead that gets charged to the city's enterprise funds for the services that they receive from the city. And so this is primarily paid by DPW for their charges for the water utility, the wastewater utility. The calculation is based off of actual expenditures. And so the reason why the revenue that the city received was lower than the budget was because the expenditures in those funds ended up coming in lower than budget. So only a smaller portion could wind up being transferred. Next up is sanitation and waste removal fees. This ended the year about $5.5 million lower than the budget assumption. This is the fee that DPW charges for incinerator, to the incinerator. The deficit that we are seeing here is primarily driven by billing delays that were experienced in fiscal '23. So this is one that we do anticipate rebounding in fiscal '24 as the department gets back up to speed on its billing practices. And then finally, property taxes. Property taxes ended the year with about an $18 million deficit. As we, when we were here before the Ways and Means Committee back in the second quarter, I talked a little bit about a duplicate data record issue that existed in the city's property tax file. And so essentially, there were a handful of files, a handful of properties that were duplicated in the file, which meant that the taxable base was overstated. And so we, obviously, and not billable. So once we removed those duplicate bills from the overall file, that had an impact on the overall, that had an overall impact on the property tax number as a whole. The other thing that we're seeing when we look at property taxes is that the preliminary data suggests that we're starting to see a decline in our collection rate, modest, but still a decline. In fiscal '22, our collection rate was 97.5%, and that's down to about 95.9% in fiscal '23. So now let's shift gears and look at the expenditure side of the House. So as I mentioned, on the expenditure side, we ended fiscal '23 with a preliminary surplus of about $58.9 million, or about 2.8% variance from what was assumed in the budget. Most of this surplus is coming from what we're seeing in contractual spending. And one thing I want to note with contractual spending is that, that's a category of expenditures that we, that we use to group expenditures in the operating budget. So this includes not only payments to consultants and things like that, but this also includes things like utility charges, any sort of like fleet charge that the city pays, anything that's really, where the costs are really driven by a contractual agreement. Some of the areas where we're seeing the biggest surpluses are in payments to subcontractors, maintenance and, maintenance and repair of real property. One of the things that I do want to note that was really helping, that was a partial driver to this and what was helping us out, was the lack of snow in fiscal '23. So within that $58.9 million, you're capturing savings that we realized from not having to utilize contractors for, for snow events. And then also, some various other savings that were associated with our, with our warmer winter. Some areas that we are very focused on in terms of potential areas of concern are around sworn overtime. So we are seeing that while we have very high vacancy rates in our police and fire departments, because of our daily minimum staffing requirements, that does mean that we are filling those shifts with more expensive overtime in order to meet our daily, our daily staffing requirements. Do also want to note that we, this is not just contained to police and fire. We are also seeing high, high levels of civilian overtime in other agencies that also require daily minimum staffing, think like Department of Public Works, Department of Transportation, those types of agencies. So breaking down the agencies in terms of their year, their ending position. So the agencies summarized on this page are those agencies that ended the year with a, with an overall surplus that exceeded 10% of the budgeted amount. You can see that some of the, some of the larger agencies that contributed to those surpluses were agencies like General Services, Housing and Community Development, the library, IT, and Rec and Parks. I will note that some of these surpluses that we're seeing in some of these agencies are where we have sort of contract-heavy agencies, where some of their work plays out over multiple years. So for example, the Office of Information and Technology, BSIT, has a number, has a very large contractual budget. And a lot of that is tied up with different software contracts that the city has. And some of those costs end up, if they're working on a big project implementation, some of those costs will wind up spanning multiple fiscal years. And so that's why we're seeing, we're seeing a general surplus when we look at these preliminary numbers. We also had a handful of agencies that ended essentially at budget. So this is between 0% to 10% variance. In general, these are, these are relatively smaller agencies, with the exception of the Police Department, Transportation, and Finance. All of those agencies essentially, every agency listed on this slide essentially ended the year at And then finally, agencies who ended the fiscal year in a negative position. So we'll talk a little bit about what was driving the deficits in each of these agencies. So first, for Board of Elections, this agency ended the year with a $1.3 million deficit. That's a 14% variation from the budgeted amount. This is related to election costs that were assumed in the fiscal '22 budget, not carried into the fiscal '23 budget, but were driven by the change in the primary date that happened. In the Fire Department, that department realized, had about an $18.9 million deficit or 8.3% from the budgeted amount. Most of their deficit is attributed to overtime and then the unbudgeted use of contractual services, including additional services to support BLS or basic life support ambulance services. The Health Department ended the year with a $12.3 million deficit or 28.3% variance. This is primarily driven by provider contracts. I will note that the bulk of this deficit is related to the tail end of the, of the costs associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. And these were unbudgeted costs that will, that will be reimbursed from FEMA. And we are working through our final reimbursement request from FEMA for these costs that we have been incurring since the start of the pandemic. The Law Department ended with a $1.9 million deficit or 13.4% budget variance. This is primarily driven by legal fees for outside counsel that was, that was brought on board for different cases. The Liquor License Board ended the year with about a $300,000 deficit or 10.2% variance. This is related to staff overtime that they attribute to some of their delays in trying to get through some of their reclassification efforts. The Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success ended the year with about a $400,000 deficit or 11.9% variance. This has to do primarily with unplanned contractual staffing costs that were not fully offset by vacancy savings in the agency. Cable and Communication also ended with about a $300,000 deficit or 46% budget variance. Again, this is partially driven by overtime costs and then also partially realized to assume, an assumed credit from a grant funding source to offset a portion of their operations. And then finally, Public Works ended with a $1.9 million deficit or about a 1.9% budget variance. This is primarily driven by higher tipping fees that came in above the budget assumption and then vehicle rental costs that exceeded the adopted budget. In terms of next steps, agencies that ended the year with a deficit will require supplemental appropriation that will come back through the City Council for approval. And so as these were, as these numbers have become finalized, we're working on preparing the package of materials that will get introduced at the Board of Estimates and then introduced in City Council and referred to Ways and Means for consideration before this body. We're aiming to have those legislative items for your consideration next month.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much. I want to note, we've been joined by Vice Chair Councilman Eric Costello. Before we go to committee questions, Council President, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, and thank you so much, Madam Director. Couple of quick questions and just one point of clarification. So, one, this is a new process. So thank you for members who've decided to join and participate in this process. You know, obviously, you know, as the citizens of Baltimore provided more autonomy of the council as it relates to the budget and working with the Budget Office, I think that from administration perspective and the mayor to the council, I think we did a yeoman's job of working together. It was new for everyone. Excited to continue to grow. And thank you for bringing forth this to us. Not only in the past that we do revenue certification, that you were up and ready to kind of perform and do, we've been able to work through these things so we can get a routine basis, ensure that we have the appropriate fiscal legislative oversight that the City Council wants, the citizens want, and ultimately, the administration would like as well. The one thing I will say is regarding supplements that come out of like closeouts or what we see through agencies throughout the year, those supplements will actually come through the FNP Committee. The supplements that we're going to keep with Ways and Means are going to be the ones that are negotiated during budget times, similar to the BOPA, but then in comparison to some of the agencies that you just listed. So just wanted to provide a point of clarification for all. So we kind of are on the same page as it relates to the point of the committee. A couple of quick questions. One, you talk about the $59 million surplus from the expenditures perspective. I guess, how does that compare in past fiscal years when we see a closeout? Is that within the range in which we want to kind of meet? Or is that, was that really surprising? Or, you know, how does that kind of compare to the past?
Yeah. I think that it was, it's slightly higher than what we have seen in recent years. You know, and fiscal '23 was a little bit of an anomaly of a year, given the fact that it was the first year of implementing the Workday Financial System. So I do think that some of the surpluses that we, we saw here are partially attributed to just slower spending that was driven by getting up to speed in the new financial system. You know, we were looking at these numbers with, with our agency partners throughout the fiscal year, and a lot of them thought that they're, they would be further along in spending than where they thought they would be. So I do think, you know, part of it is just related to that sort of abnormal year. I will say, on the, on the personnel side, you know, I don't think the results are super, were super surprising, because we do know that, you know, there are consequences for a high vacancy rate. And so that is something, again, that we're continually, continually working with agencies and with DHR to really figure out how we make some meaningful progress on the vacancy number, so that we can start to fill some of these shifts with regular staff time. So we're not paying overtime. And then we're also not burning through our, through our staff in terms of, you know, requiring, you know, requiring high levels of overtime in order to, to provide services.
Now, sticking on overtime, I think we were like $47 million over, I think 27 for Fire, 20 for the Police Department. How does that compare to previous years? And then when you bounce off the number of vacancies, like how much, what is the net result for the city?
Yeah. I would have to get the, the prior year overtime numbers for you and provide those as a follow-up. I will say, in the case of the Police Department, they ended in an overall positive position. The department did not have a deficit at the end of, at the end of the fiscal year.
Is that the first time that we've seen that in recent years?
We've seen them come in very, like, they've been really close and at budget in recent years. So, you know, I think, you know, that's, that's a great testament to that's, that department's, you know, really managing, you know, strong fiscal management in terms of, you know, managing to the city's budget. On the Fire Department side, they ended the year about $19 million over budget. Again, that was, you know, partially overtime, where we saw some of that was offset by vacancy savings. But the other, their non-personnel spending was ultimately what took them over budget.
Yeah, I think the historic view of the reduction in police overtime is really a good news story that we don't talk about a lot. So definitely would like to see kind of a comparative bar chart to show over the past, you know, five, 10 years, the significant reduction in police overtime. I guess now jiving that to, and you probably don't have this on you, but jiving that to the number of vacancies, how does that mash into that? Like the net impact to the city when we talk about the salary savings on vacancies in Fire and in Police?
Yeah. So when we look at, when we look at Police, their overtime numbers are up if we compare it back to five years ago. And I have some analysis that I can share with the committee as a follow-up, because where we looked at vacancy numbers in relation to overtime numbers. And the relationship is, as you would expect, that we've seen that number increase as the number of vacancies. that number increase as the number of vacancies have increased. You know, just off the top of my head, I want to say about five years ago, we were in the 35 to 40 million dollar range on police overtime, and now we're in the $50 million range, just based off of the vacancy levels.
Got it. Now, just jumping to expenditures, and Mr. Chair, this is my last question. I think maintenance and repair of real property is $7 million. Is that, we just kind of overestimate, or is that tied into snow removal as well?
So those surpluses were primarily in the Department of General Services, Wreck and Parks, and the Convention Center. I would say those surpluses are more so driven by delays or in delivering those projects that they had assumed with their budget.
Oh, just specifically tied to projects that are behind schedule, per se? Now, the 17 million, a lot of that is built into snow removal?
Yeah. So on the DOT side, most, nearly all of their surpluses was related to snow removal costs coming in, you know, way under budget.
Now, this is just an operational question, kind of back to overtime, Police Department and other agencies. When we talk about overtime and we have high vacancies, does the money automatically kind of get earmarked to fund overtime from the vacancies? Is that how it's kind of set up?
Some agencies will, at budget time, adjust their budget to reallocate across those lines. The way that most agencies handle it is, you know, we have a category of expenditures that fall under the umbrella of salaries. That includes things like, you know, permanent wages, hourly wages, overtime. And what most agencies are doing is managing within that overall salary budget, knowing that if they are in a period of high vacancies, that they're going to see an offset between perm wages and what they're seeing on overtime. Most agencies want to do it that way, so that, because they do have a goal of getting staffed back up. So they want to keep the funding on the budget side associated with the positions, so that if they can get those positions filled, they'll realize their overtime numbers will come down.
Understood. And I promise, last question. So when you aggregate out all of the expenditure deficits, where do that put, where will that put us at? I think like 20, 32, 33, 35, maybe about $37 million, maybe around $37, $36 million in comparison to, I guess, a 59%. So that delta, what would the delta go, like 59 minus that 37? Is that something that the administration is actively working on, and potential supplements that will come before this committee?
Yeah. So, you know, in terms of the closeout actions, you're going to see a couple of things. You know, this committee will see the supplemental that will appropriate funds to bring these agencies into balance. Separately, we will present a carry forward set of recommendations where agencies with surpluses would be able to carry forward funds from '23 into '24. The carry forward appropriation requires BOE approval, but does not come to City Council for approval.
Got you. Now, but it also takes your approval to put it on the BOE, right?
That's correct. So agencies, we went through an exercise where we solicited requests from agencies earlier this summer. We've reviewed those requests. We went, we provided our recommendations to the administration. We're working on finalizing those, again, with the hopes of getting to one of the upcoming BOEs within the next four to six weeks.
Yeah, not a concrete answer, but the expectation is most of the $22 million, give or take, that will be left over, the delta between the 59 and 37, most of that will be carried forward. Is that probably a good fair?
Yeah. So, yeah, so we're looking at sort of the overall surplus number and looking at how we allocate that, both to address these deficits, but then also to carry forward for other items that we know need to be taken care of in fiscal '24.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for the questions. I do, since you mentioned the transitional Workday, I did have a follow-up, because in terms of the sanitation and waste removal fees, you had also mentioned that that was a factor. So how long had the payments been delayed? And then can you talk a little bit more about that Workday transition and the challenges with that?
Yeah. So the, and I believe there's a hearing on the Workday transition coming up, an oversight hearing on the Workday transition coming up in the next two to three weeks as well. The city went live with Phase Two of Workday, which was essentially the financial suite in April, or not April, August of 2022. So, you know, we just had our full one-year anniversary in the new system. As part of the go-live and the implementation into the new system, especially in the early parts of fiscal '23, there were just various delays that were encountered by city agencies as they were working to get things up and going in the new system. And so we saw that sort of play out in different ways. But I will say, by the end of the fiscal year, and where we are one year in, is that many of those delays have been remedied. We've seen that in terms of progress that's been made around vendor payment turnaround times, and bringing those, really focusing on prompt payment, and reducing the backlog for getting folks paid. But, you know, we still do see a couple of examples of things that were, that did get delayed in fiscal '23 that ended up sort of flowing through in terms of how we're seeing the numbers. But I do think that as we move into fiscal '24, agency folks are getting much more comfortable in the system. I think the Finance Department is much more comfortable in its role in terms of managing the system. And so we should, this really, I do fully expect that some of the operational impacts that we saw in fiscal '23 were one-time and temporary associated with that new system.
Thank you. And I know, Councilmember McCray?
I just wanted to follow up. I mean, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to follow up about the Workday issues. What other agencies were impacted outside of DPW regarding billings and collections?
I, I don't know right off of the top of my head. I think we're, we're seeing, you're seeing DPW in the context of this presentation, because in terms of how that flowed through for different key revenue sources for the city. But I can, like I said, there's a follow-up briefing that is coming in the next couple of weeks, where I can make sure that that's a topic that the Finance Director is able to speak to.
Okay. I will be chairing a committee. So on October the 11th, if you guys would just have that information, what other agencies were in just the mail, that it was. I just also have just one additional question. And this was regarding the Office of Children and Family Success regarding their deficit. I wanted to know, it's noted that they have unplanned contractual staffing. They had unplanned contractual staffing costs. What were the, what were the contracts, or what were the staffing that they contracted out?
So they were utilizing contract staffing agencies to fill vacant positions on their roster, and the cost of those employees were not fully offset by savings from having the vacant positions.
As a committee request, would you be able to get us the information about the vacant positions that they filled with the contractual employees?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, thank you. Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first question is what the Chair was referring to, my annual ask for the revenue for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That, we usually get that in a separate spreadsheet, so that could be a committee request as well. It's good to know that the housing market has stayed where it is, because that means more money for the trust fund as well. Thank you for that. The second question is, can we, and I don't know, it doesn't sound like you have it off the top of your head, but I'm just really curious about the DHCD surplus and MOHS surplus in particular, given that we had this whole hearing about MOHS and the spending relative to the landlords, or maybe some other things. That was not a Workday issue. That was something else. So if there's a way to get, maybe by agency, what some of those issues were that, you know, contributed to the surplus, that would be helpful.
Okay.
And I'm super curious about DHCD, too. But I also know that sometimes, in some of the agencies, the money that's due to nonprofits and to others has been traditionally slow. So I'm wondering if it's a symptom of that particular issue as well.
That's exactly right. A lot of the agencies that you see on the slide where we reference significant surpluses, so I'm just looking, you know, Housing and Community Development, Homeless Services, and Monzie's not in this category. I think Monzie is in the next category. Those are agencies where a lot of their surplus is, I would say, is partially driven by delays in their grant process.
Right.
You know, for the Housing and Community Development, we know that there are timing delays associated with getting the community catalyst grants out the door.
A year behind.
Yep. And so that's contributing to what we're seeing on the surplus. On the, you know, Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, we're also seeing, you know, delays in terms of their contracts, and getting those fully executed, and getting the dollars out the door. So those are, those are some of the big drivers that we see with some of these agencies that have surpluses. But I'd be more than happy to take this list, and in the way we characterize the deficits, characterize the surpluses for you.
That would be great. I would appreciate that, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Ramos, just wanted to state for the record that you requested the breakout for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund out of the transfer recidation tax. That was your request?
Yes. Because that is, yes. That is, it's not, it's not out of the transfer and recidation tax. It is an additional yield tax that's placed on top of the transfer and recidation. So the revenue that we get from that is what I'm asking for. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the, just real quick, real quick, to just to clarify my request here, it's the, you know, this, the slides don't have numbers on it, but the, you know, the expenditure by, of surplus by agency. And just to put a point, I'm wondering, Director, because the issues with like getting grants out the door and things like that, this is not the first time that this is an issue. So is there a plan in place to make sure, because not only are we seeing this here, but the fact that the money is still sitting there means that it's not on the street doing the work, and that nonprofits and others, you know, are trying to figure out how to operate. So, and some of these are reimbursable. So is there a plan in place to deal with that?
Yeah. I mean, I know from a budget side, I'm always participating with these agencies to figure out how we can structure things in the budget process, to make sure that everything is set up as, set up as cleanly as possible, so that on July 1st, you are off and running. I think separately, a lot of these grant-heavy agencies are really looking at how they streamline getting stuff to the Board of Estimates, again, so that they can get the dollars out on the street. I think we've seen some progress happening in the Department of Housing and Community Development. The Health Department is sort of trying to leverage upon some of those lessons learned. You know, I've been participating in sessions with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services to really look at their contracting process, and how they're structuring their contracts, again, so that they can get the dollars out on the street to the providers as soon as possible.
So I'm glad you're on that. I think we just need to keep on understanding what that looks like, so that people can actually get their money.
For sure.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Porter?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I did have a question about the agencies that have projected surplus for FY '23. Is that, are they projected to be surplus in FY '24?
We do our, we do our projections on a quarterly basis, and the first quarter ends this Saturday.
Okay.
And so we will do our first quarter projections during the month of October, and so we'll be in a position to come back to this committee and report on those results probably at some point in November.
Okay. So the reason why I asked about that question is because those first quarter estimates are going to be key, with regards to like making sure that we stay on track for funds spent between budget and actuals. The Department of Human Resources, are they represented here today?
I do not believe they are.
Okay. Is there an opportunity to do an analysis of the number of vacant positions and where we are in those first quarter, first quarter estimates? The reason why I ask is because I'm trying to figure out where the bottlenecks are within the agencies that represented surplus in your presentation. Is it an HR issue? Is it a service issue? We need to figure out where that bottleneck is, so that we can make sure that those funds are spent by the end of the year, so that we can have accurate projections throughout the year for next year, FY '25.
For sure. And we, you know, we are working closely with DHR around vacancies. I know they've been doing a lot of analysis, and I'm sure Director Herbert and his team would be happy to come before the committee and talk about that work.
Okay. And if it's possible, just make sure that the presentations align and match. Okay, thank you.
For sure.
Any additional questions from committee members? I don't see any. Okay, well, thank you then.
Thank you all.
All right. At this point, we'll move over to the Capital Budget.
Good afternoon. Thanks for inviting the Department of Planning to this afternoon's hearing. I'm Nicole Stewart, the Assistant Director of the Planning Department. I'm joined today virtually by Sarah Perrinellum, who is our Chief of Policy and Data, as well as Kristin Ahern, our Capital Budget Supervisor. So last week, we kicked off the 2024 planning process for the FY '25 CIP, and agencies have received their targets. One highlight we wanted to take the opportunity today to share, is that the capital team will now this year be using a new budgeting system, a capital budgeting system called Adaptive, which is integrated with Workday. And so that new budgeting system will improve the ability to connect budgets and spending over time going forward, in addition to having all of the CIP project information in one place, so including both scope, costs, estimates, schedules, et cetera. So also, as a reminder, let's see. One second. Good. Are you able to? Well, while we're getting, okay, there we go. So we just wanted to also share a reminder, of course, on our website, there is over a decade's worth of information about all the capital budgets, in addition to breakdowns by agency, et cetera. So for the public, as well as the council, please avail yourselves of those detailed resources on our website. Next slide. So today, we've been asked to discuss recent CIP budgeting and expenses. So for this analysis, we looked at projects budgeted in FY '23, as well as projects that had expenses in FY '23. There were, of course, some limitations of both the data and the analysis, as Laura mentioned, with the transition to Workday from Dynamics. Some of the older, all of the older information has not been converted over to Workday, even for the data that has been converted to Workday. We understand that there are just some continued challenges that we will continue to work with our partners over at BAP to try to resolve. So we should consider this data, of course, a preliminary snapshot. In addition, the closeout for FY '23, the same for the operating budget that's still in process for the capital budget. And then, of course, this Workday right now, this Workday system is only going to provide us financial information, not necessarily specific explanations of some of the statuses of the CIP projects, and we have over 2,500 active CIP projects. And for that type of information, we'll continue to coordinate with the agencies to try to understand the additional context for some of the projects. So, one thing we also wanted to note, so for the capital budget team, for every year when we're looking at the appropriations and expenses, we are reviewing that in order to inform our allocations. Many of the projects that we're funding every year are multi-year projects, and so we look at that information for awareness of where projects are, how much they've received, against what the total budget of those projects might be. And so for, as an example, for FY '23, these top-level numbers, there was $793 million budget across 285 projects in that fiscal year, and then about $390 million was expended in FY '23 on active projects within agencies. And so we wanted to, so these are two different data points, and we wanted to make sure to show an example of what this means. So we chose libraries as an agency. chose libraries as an agency for this example. And so in FY '23, they were budgeted about $9 million. You will be familiar with many of those projects, like the Park Heights Library, the Waverly Library. But then on the spend for FY '23, we expect to see minimal spend for those new projects because, of course, capital projects take time to go through the implementation process. However, there are also spending on those older projects from previous allocations. And so we just wanted to, while we are going to show these top-level numbers, we wanted to sort of just do a breakdown of what, at the project level, what this example shows in those two different data points that we're showing. Right. And so this is the, again, the top-level numbers by agency, again, everything that was budgeted in FY '23, and then also what was spent in FY '23 on all active projects by agency. Oh, and just to mention, the project-level information is in the appendix. Right, so, so based on the information that we just presented on the spending in FY ' '23 across agencies, I'm sure you all are familiar with many of these narratives and stories about the implications of both national and local trends that are impacting capital budget spends across the country. Of course, inflation, supply chain issues due to COVID-19, some of which are still being resolved, labor shortages in the construction industry and within city agencies, in order to project manage these capital projects. In addition, as I mentioned, there is a process for capital projects to be implemented from planning, bid, award, design, design, again, bidding during construction, construction, inspection. And of course, you know, for simple projects, this could be, you know, a timeline of a year, 18 months. For more complex projects, like infrastructure projects, bridge projects, we know that this could be certainly a longer timeline. So when we think about sort of looking at the expenses in a, in a single year for capital projects, just to keep that in mind. In addition, some of the more specific challenges for some of our city agencies, well, one, we know that because we have limited capital funds, we are essentially budgeting over multiple years. So we just mentioned the Park Heights Library Project. We know that they needed to have several years of funding from various sources in order to now be able to get started. So that can also impact the way this information is presented in terms of spend by project, the length of the procurement process for design, and then again, for construction, various regulatory reviews like stonewall management, as well as processes that are outside of the city that we don't control. And then, of course, bidding and contracting, those processes, as well as local mandates that might increase costs and impact the bidding process, bidding and contracting process. So as I mentioned, the information per project is in the appendix. We also want to use this as, as an opportunity to learn what the council wants to know about these capital projects in this type of report going forward.
All right, thank you. I'm sure Council President has a question or comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quick, how granular, like project by project, do you know why, like, the rate of spend is low? Like, is there a way to, like, pinpoint a project and automatically understand and know why the rate of spending is so low?
So, right now, that information is not captured in Workday, so that would require us to have discussions with the agencies on specific projects. Is there a, if there is a particular project or a list of projects or even a criteria of projects the council might want us to focus on to collect that information, we can work on that. I will say that the new system will allow us to have that type of qualitative information in the system going forward.
Understood. So is that the, is that the goal of the initial implementation of the new system that you guys are transitioning to?
One of the goals.
Okay, perfect. When we talk about like the $792 million in the capital fund, like, how much is that, like, debt service versus like Pago? Would you know that?
Well, Kristin will.
The $792 million represents the fiscal '23 capital budget, so we can, sorry, that represents the fiscal year '23 capital budget, so we can provide those details as a follow-up. It doesn't include debt service. Debt service is budgeted in the operating budget. It includes all the various sources such as Pago. We'll provide it as a follow-up to give you the exact numbers, but Pago, GO bonds, the utility funds typically make up 2/3 to 1/4 of the capital budget. So that's the utility Pago and utility revenue bonds. And then state and federal funds are kind of the big, the big categories budgeted there.
I guess the, the thing I'm really interested are the, the GO bonds and any of the, any other bonds that are tied into it. You know, obviously, you know, when we go to the bond market and we get the bonds, you know, we're paying debt on those bonds. And if the money's just sitting there, you know, maybe that's the cost of like doing business. But it'd be real interesting from a, to drill down on and see how much money is just like sitting out there and waiting. Yeah, something else to add to it?
No, I, I think as a follow-up, we can work with Department of Finance to provide an explanation of how those bonds are issued on the market. We're typically not issuing them until the expenses are incurred.
Okay, great.
So we're not paying debt service on funds that haven't been spent.
Great.
And just to add on to Kristin's comment, so the Capital Projects Fund is set up as like a reimbursable fund, so we incur the expenses, and then based off of the expenses we've incurred, we go to market and sell bonds. To Kristin's point, it's, it's very important that we time the, how we sell our bonds against spending because we do have to operate under the IRS requirements around arbitrage. And if the actual dollars aren't spent within the IRS time constraints, we, we actually have to use that money to pay back the debt service rather than use it to deliver the project.
Understood.
So it's really important that we sort of sync up our borrowing with our spending so that we avoid those arbitrage deadlines.
So when we look at bonding expenditures and capacity, we should look at it as a package.
Yep.
So we have this package of 100, 200, whatever, million dollars. We know the, we know the products and the, and the programs are all rolled up to that particular package. They're all feeding off of it, and it kind of continues to recycle as we go out and get additional trants of money for those projects.
That's right. And then, you know, it's important to, you know, we, we monitor, we try to monitor that number really closely on the operating budget side because then obviously that has a direct impact in what we have to budget and assume for our debt service payments.
Now, the only other piece of information, and I'm wondering if you're able to capture it in the new software that you guys are transitioning to, is when we look at like the multi-year projects, and from the state, we see it all the time. So an award of, say, $3 million, $1 million over the course of three, of three years, you can't start the project until after the third year, right? Get that. How much money, like, out of the 50% that, that hasn't been spent yet is tied up in like those multi-year jobs? It'd be really interesting to be able to just like, at a click of a button, understand and know because I think that provides additional context to, you know, that 50% of money that has been allocated but not spent yet in fiscal year '23. And I assume right now, you're unable to communicate what that number is, right?
Right. We can look at, you know, the number of active projects that don't have any expenditures against them.
Yeah.
So we can do that.
Now, with the new system, would you be able to have that level of detail at the click of a button?
At the click of a button, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm, I don't want to overstate, but, but would you, would you be able to like pull that data out for, for the council in the future?
We, I, yes, I believe we will. I think, I think there's some work to do to contextualize it.
Yeah.
What's in there now, but I think that's something we can aim for in the future.
Because I think that tells the real story of, you know, where we are. It's one thing to say like, hey, you know, we factor, we're spending this amount, we only spent 50%, but we didn't really factor spending in this amount because we knew it was a multi-year project. And we knew that 80% of it would be tied into this, and it's really that 20% delta that we really need to talk about. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Porter, followed by Ramos.
Actually, Mr. President just asked my question about the multi-year project. Thank you.
Right, perfect. Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you. Two, two things. One, to, to follow up on what the Council President was talking about, I think then we would want to see in this chart, right, an additional column that says, you know, projected or purposed or something carryover, so that we know that that was, you know, for instance, the DPW is, has money for an East Baltimore transfer station, right? We only allocated a couple million dollars for that, but the project is $10 million. And for over a few years, we're actually putting in money each year to that project, right? So we're not going to see the spend.
Exactly.
But at some point, we're going to see it. So it's just a matter of, we, we don't want to sort of penalize DPW, not penalize, but like, look, like, oh, wait, why didn't you spend the money? Well, we're not supposed to spend the money. We're going to spend it over here. So just articulating that somehow in this, whether it's an extra column that just says collected money, I don't know what's right.
Total project budget. We would have that information.
Something like that.
And just as a reminder, you know, in contrast to the operating budget, you know, capital funds don't expire.
Correct.
In the same way that operating funds do. But yes, total project budget for those capital projects.
Or, or, but see, we're, and there, there may be years that we don't get to the project budget. So it could be a column that says percentage to the project budget or something like that, right? Because if we're getting to 10 million, I'm just using 10 million as an example. If we're getting to 10 million for the East Baltimore Transfer Station, and we're in, you know, we're only at 4 million for this year, you know, we, we want to see that we're cumulatively getting there, but that it's not a spend, right? Does that make any sense?
Yes, absolutely.
So it's just augmenting what the Council President was saying, but just a presentation for us, you know, how that might work. I mean, we can work with you on how that works.
Certainly.
The second question is, under DHCD, and actually, I think on all of these, the first line says blank.
Yes. So that is a part of the issue with Workday and the system. And so what that means, that's expenditures that have not been associated with a project in Workday. And so that's part of the work that needs to be done to do the data cleaning in order to be able to make sure that those expenses are associated with the project in Workday.
Gotcha. So every project is going to get a unique identifier.
Yes.
And those, the 300,000 or whatever it is in here, 3 million, doesn't have an identifier yet.
Exactly.
But in the next round of these that you'll show us, it will have that, in an ideal situation.
In an ideal situation.
At some point when you're finished with the transition.
Yes, that's a goal.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? All right, thank you. Okay, let's go to city schools then.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mary Ann Cox. I'm the Deputy Chief Financial Officer for City Schools, and I am here to offer the operating results projections for fourth quarter FY 2023. I'd like to thank everyone for giving us an opportunity to present this information.
Can you pull the mic down a little bit?
Pardon?
Just pull the mic down so we can hear you.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Okay, well, good afternoon to everyone, the committee members, the city council commissioners, city council president, staff members of both city schools and the city of Baltimore, and interested community members. I'm here to present the FY 2023 quarter four results. So this is not, this is a presentation on the fourth quarter, so it is not like the end-of-year stuff. We, we city schools have a different reporting cycle than the city of Baltimore. All the LEAs in Maryland are required to submit a, an audit of basic financial statements to MSDE no later than September 30th, which is this week, or if the, the due date falls on the weekend, it goes to the next business day, which would be Monday. So we are in the final stages of our audit, and changes are still occurring. We're working with our auditors, but we will submit one time. So in talking about the presentation of the material that we gave, all right, the, we're going to present the general fund revenues, the general fund expenditures, and then a summary that lists, you know, that nets them against each other, so you'll see where we were for the fourth quarter. We always cite the reason for our quarterly presentations, and in this case, it's City of Baltimore Legislation LO 21-0003, which created this, this Finance and Performance Committee and asked us to present for the information on a quarterly basis. Okay. All right. This is our revenue slide. City Schools, you know, is a different operating entity than the city of Baltimore, and so we only report, you know, we report by fund. This is the general fund. I want to point out that the, the fund sources that we have for the general fund is the state of Maryland revenue, the city of Baltimore, the federal revenue, investment earnings, and other, other revenue. So that can encompass a lot of things. One thing I wanted to make clear also was that the, the budgeted numbers in this presentation are all final. For something to be final for our audited financial statements and, you know, reporting purposes, the city schools' Board of Commissioners must vote in a public board meeting to approve all the amendments that have been submitted over the years. So they submitted and made final the FY 2023 final budget at the board meeting on Tuesday evening. So the budget numbers are final. So now we have our quarterly revenue and the percentage of the revenue to the total budget. I, I do want to point out that the, the revenue and the percentage are considered draft because they are not our final. It's not an end-of-year thing. So we should have those numbers shortly. As I indicated, City Schools is required per co-mark to submit our financial, our audited financial statements to MSDE by 9:30 or the next business day. And also, we have a board-approved policy DIC, whose compliance requires our CEO to submit the audited financial statements to the board no later than October 15th. So those are the reporting requirements that we have. So I'd like to speak about the state of Maryland revenue. As most people are familiar with our funding understands, we get money from the state. We have a basic amount that's called a foundation program, and then we have other needs that we need to serve, such as poverty or special education, English language learners. You know, there's a lot of different types. We have college and career readiness and things. So they give city schools the money. And also, because of the Kerwin funding, we are now required to distribute a certain percentage of that income directly to the schools so that the money is spent at the schools. So actually, 2024, I think, is the first year that we actually start submitting on those, you know, so that they can confirm that the money went to the schools. And 2025 is the drop dead date where you absolutely must have everything in working order to report by school revenue and expenditures. So people who are familiar with our, you know, functions knows that we have done student, we have funded, you know, students by their needs for many years, and I think we're at least 10 years into the program. So we're way ahead of most people in terms of student funding. We call it fair student funding, but what it comes down to essentially is the funding follows the student. So if a student is at school too, and they move to another school, you know, we, we try to make sure that the funding would go there if, if it's done before the enrollment date. We, we have two enrollment dates. We have the projected enrollment, which is done at the, in the spring of the year, and for which we develop our budgets with that. And then we have a, kind of like a true-up that we And then we have a, um, kind of like a true-up that we do, uh, when the September 30th actual enrollment is known. And then those changes are processed in, uh, November and December. So, um, the, the Kerwin legislation is, it's, um, not, and not as difficult for us as it is for the other LEAs because we are already doing another form of it anyway. So, uh, we'll, we just have to break the costs out now according to the MSDE requirements, which we will do. Uh, the city of Baltimore revenue, as you all know, uh, there's two ways to calculate it. And MSDE calculates it for us. It's, uh, the local required contribution or maintenance of effort. Whichever one is higher, that's the one that the local governments must fund. In the city of Baltimore's case, it's the local required contribution that is higher. So, that's the number we go with. For FY 2023, the city of Baltimore local required contribution was 313 million. Of the 313 million, 309 million was related to the general fund and a little over 4 million went to the transitional supplemental instruction grant, which we report in our special revenue fund. So, that, the total of those two is the, um, 313 required local contribution. And city schools also received a one-time supplemental appropriation from the city of Baltimore in the amount of 3.6 million. That was related, uh, that was calculated to offset the decrease in city schools guaranteed tax revenue, uh, state revenue, uh, related to the reduction in retiree health benefits, which flows through city schools. Um, we're not responsible for it, but the cost flows through our books and that allows us to generate a certain type of, of revenue. And so, when that decreased, uh, we were granted this one-time, um, additional revenue. Uh, I wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, federal revenue. For city schools, our federal revenue includes A-rate, the various ROTSE revenues, uh, the IRS subsidy for our 2011 QSO bonds, and FEMA. This year of, of the total of the federal revenue, the FEMA revenue is the largest. I will say that we, we have submitted three, uh, requests for reimbursement from FEMA. They have paid for two and they have told us how much the third will be. The, uh, and we need that written confirmation from FEMA before we're allowed to accrue, uh, the revenue for FEMA. So, we received that, uh, response. And so, in the FY 23 quarter four, federal revenue of 24 million, 23.8 million of that relates to a FEMA accrual. Again, we, we had to have it confirmed by, um, FEMA that they were going to be reimbursing this. And as was mentioned earlier, we are also collecting calls for one final, uh, FEMA request for reimbursement. So, there will be one more for the COVID-related, uh, information that will come later. I wanted to talk a little bit about investment earnings. As you can see, it's, uh, a huge variance over, uh, the budgeted amount. And the reason was touched on earlier is the city of Baltimore had the same thing for years. Our investment income was next to nothing because of the situation with the, uh, the, uh, the Fed's rate, you know, the interest rate. I think at some point it was zero. So, we were not earning much. So, but this year, we have, um, an increase in that. And, uh, you can see it's $19.4 million this year. And we had a, a comment from our, um, customer service representative at, at Wilmington Trust where he said the federal, the reason for the increase is the federal, the Feds were raising their interest rates to restrict growth and slow inflation. The short-term interest rates at calendar year 22, quarter two, which is our fourth quarter, uh, for a fiscal basis, was 0.5%. The short-term interest rates for FY 23, um, uh, you know, quarter four, which is the, the quarter that we're reporting, is 4.75%. So, that's a nine times increase, a 900 times increase. So, that's why we see that significant increase in investment earnings. And, uh, just so you know, that is not just investment interest, although the bulk of it is. It also includes, uh, us recognizing the, uh, unrealized gains or losses associated with our investment values as we're required to for, uh, for GAAP. Uh, we have other revenue and other revenue, as you would expect, is everything that's not, uh, reported elsewhere. Our, uh, other revenue includes the MSA revenue that would, they reimburse city schools for certain costs on the general fund, including the 21st Century, uh, office and some design work, feasibility studies, certain things that city schools does. This does not include the construction costs that are held on MSA's books. Uh, we also have revenue for non-resident tuition, summer school tuition, rental fees and permits that, uh, people want to rent our building sometimes, you know, on temporary basis, or they'll rent the fields to have some events. Uh, we have police overtime. Uh, we also get some revenue from the out-of-county living arrangements from the other LEAs. And then there's everything else that doesn't have a place there. Uh, what you can see is that overall, our budget is almost 1.4 billion. Uh, 320 million of that was in the fourth quarter. Uh, one thing I wanted to tell you that, that might explain why some of these numbers are not what you might expect is that the state of Maryland gives us our revenue six times a year. They give it to us in July, September, November, January, March, and May. So, in the fourth quarter, there's only one of those six payments. It doesn't change the total amount, but it, it skews it so that the earlier quarters would have looked more promising for the percentage of, uh, of state revenue. Uh, the city of Baltimore revenue that we get, we get money twice a month for all, all 12 months of the year. Okay. Yeah, I already talked about that. Okay. So, shall I go to the end and then I'll take questions then? Okay. Uh, the next schedule talks about the city schools FY 2023 quarter four expenditures. City schools is required to report our expenditures by MSDE category. Uh, MSDE has a manual, uh, finance manual that we must, uh, comply with the requirements in there. Um, we are, are the restrictions that come to us by comar says that you may not spend more money in a MSDE category than you have appropriated. So, we also have to watch that. It stops us from spending at certain points and then we have to reallocate from other places. Um, I wanted to, uh, talk a little bit about, uh, certain types of the costs that are basically distributed, uh, over all the categories. City schools offers pay all year to our 10-month employees, to certain 10, uh, 10-month employees, uh, the bulk of which are teachers. So, teachers have the option to not be paid as a regular 10-month employee, which they're paid over 21.6 pay periods a year. But they may take their pay over 26 pays, which sounds, uh, it sounds very reasonable to me. And a lot of our people are, are exercising that option. And what we're doing this year to make it even easier for them to sign up is, uh, the selection to opt into, um, pay all year is going to happen at the same time as our, um, you know, where you make your medical selections. So, if you don't do anything, what you were, did the former year follows over, which has not been the case before. Everybody in pay all year had to, uh, uh, sign up every year and they won't have to do it anymore. So, we're thinking more people will take advantage of that. So, the way we record the costs for pay all year, and this happens wherever the, the, um, individuals are reporting, um, uh, they, we report their costs all through the year as they're paid. So, up to the end of the 21.6 pay periods, everything is level. But then, uh, as we close out the books in June, we make, we record an accrual on the general fund for four full pays for those individuals who are on pay all year. Because we haven't paid it out by the end of, of June, but we owe it to them for that fiscal year services. So, we must accrue it and we do. And it, it distorts some of the numbers in, in the month of June, which is in the fourth quarter. There are several things that we do more on an annual basis, um, that, that, you know, sways the numbers, um, more one way than the other. Uh, another one that I wanted to talk about here is student health services. As you can see, there's a, um, a total budget of 17.8 million with an actual of 17.4 million in the, uh, fourth quarter. That was related to the COVID testing, uh, expenditures. They had been charged to a grant, uh, the USR grant, actually, throughout the year. And then it was determined that those were, uh, suitable for requesting reimbursement from FEMA. We confirmed with FEMA that they would be, uh, a reimbursable cost and they told us that they would. So, we did the journal entry to move the cost to the general fund in June. So, it, it skews the percentage of some, but that's why. Uh, we also have, uh, capital outlay and debt service where we have a tendency to record some of the journals once or twice a year. And so, it skews it, uh, looking at it from a quarter basis, but the totals are right. Um, one thing that I believe city, uh, the city of Baltimore is already familiar with, city schools has been contributing for the last several years, $30 million a year in interceptor revenue from our state revenue to MSA as a contribution. 20 million of it was on behalf of city schools and 10 million of it was on behalf of the city of Baltimore relating to this GTB revenue that by passing the retiree health benefits through city schools, it generated additional, um, uh, guaranteed tax base revenue. So, uh, that effect was, was contributed, uh, on the basis of the city of Baltimore. So, during FY 2023, or actually, a late FY 2022 legislation said that, uh, that was going to change and city schools would only pay 20 million going forward. 10 million of it, again, was still related to the contribution on behalf of the city of Baltimore and 10 million for ours. So, that's why the numbers that you see here in capital outlay are, is $20.6 million. And that's because 20 million of it relates to the payment to MSA. So, uh, uh, debt service, yeah, that's, that, that come, that becomes recorded, uh, late in the year. So, that's why it's all in the fourth quarter. Okay. And so, MSDE, um, gave us a revised NOGA, uh, adjusting the intercept money. So, the money that city schools gets from the city of, uh, from the state of Maryland, they give us NOGAs for everything. There's some grant awards. So, we know, uh, you know, late June, early July, maybe, exactly what we're going to get for the various state revenue categories. Um, there's one that we, we don't quite know about that we find out later in the year. It's the national board certification amount. But the rest of it, we, we know what we're going to get, one way or the other, from the city. Okay. I mean, from the state. Okay. So, uh, I believe that's all I have on revenue. So, if we go to the, um, the expenditures by object, this is the one that makes the most sense to people. So, um, I, I believe that other entities use this more than we do. But we do not report in our financial statements by object. We report by category, uh, because we're required to. So, you can see here that we have a column that said final appropriations, final carryover, final appropriations, including carryover. The final appropriations is the sum of the original adopted budget approved by the board and the four quarterly, uh, budget amendments that we submit for board approval, which they just approved on Tuesday night. This final carryover amount relates to FY 2022 encumbrances that are noted in the, uh, signed fund balance. And so, this will carry appropriation forward. So, if, uh, if I get bills late from the vendors and it was for services in the prior year, I don't have to use current year funding for that. And I can use this, uh, carryover of the encumbrance amount. So, um, the next column we have is quarter four expenditures. And, uh, to that, we add the encumbrances as of 6:30 2023. And you can see it increased slightly from the prior year. That would be the amount that would be included in city schools note 10, which is, um, the fund balance sheet that says what our various fund balances are, you know, signed, committed, unrestricted, whatever, unreserved. So, uh, that is the number, the 82 million that will go in there. So, again, when you look at the percentage of FY 2023 quarter four actual expenditures compared to the total budget, you would expect to see, eh, maybe somewhere under 25% because as people know, city schools, uh, most of our costs are related to the schools. The schools fit, uh, we do not have a full month in, in, uh, June. So, uh, we should have less expenditures in the month of June. And July, we only have summer school, July and August. So, uh, there are certain months of the year where we don't have as much expenditures. But in terms of reporting these, you can see that there is a, um, like 25.7% of the total budget was in salary and wages. And I believe that pay all year plays a part in that. The fringe benefits, I think it's a little bit lower because when our employees sign up for pay all year, they may get paid out over 26 pay periods, but their benefits are taken out over 21.6. So, the only benefits for that rather large, uh, accrual for four pay periods for pay all year, uh, the only cost to, to city schools for benefits is FICA. That's all. So, um, when I look at these other ones, um, for contractual services and materials and supplies, the bulk of this money is at the schools. The schools have an opportunity to, uh, utilize their funds. They're supposed to be for items whose services will have been rendered through 6:30 or they will have received them through 6:30. But that certainly doesn't mean that we've paid them by 6:30 and we don't. So, we have to wait for the vendors to give us the, the invoices. So, that's why you see, uh, the larger amounts in there. Uh, utilities went up this year. We had, uh, significant increase in our utilities income. I believe we had to add about $5 million to their overall budget to help them pay their, uh, invoices through year end. So, um, principal and interest, again, it's a timing issue. And transfers, uh, just wanted to have a quick conversation about transfers. The, the amounts that are included in transfers for city schools includes the cost that we've paid for non-public schools, uh, related to special ed's where, uh, the students cannot get what they need for, uh, a free and appropriate public education through city schools, but at their IEP meetings, that it was determined that they would have to go to a non-public school. Um, we also have Okla IKC, which is, eh, about $2.5 million a year, $2.5 to $3 million. That's out-of-county living arrangements and informal kinship care. So, that would be for students who live within the geographic boundaries of the city of Baltimore, but who live, say, in group homes or in other homes, like with their family or whatever, outside the city limits. So, city schools and the other LEAs who have that situation, we must reimburse the other LEAs who, uh, is educating those students for the, uh, local portion because they get the state revenue because they're included in their enrollment count. But we reimburse them for the local portion. Uh, we also pay, um, the, the, uh, the Department of Juvenile Services and the Department of Health Services for providing educational services to our students who are in their care. So, that's per comar also. So is the Okla IKC. Uh, and of course, we pay for seed school, which is probably about $3 million a year. And seed school is that residential, used to be middle school, now it's a middle high, where students may opt, or actually, they may request to attend. And they do that independently of us. We. of us. We don't have anything to do with that. And then we get the notification from the seed school later that they will be attending the seed school, and then we get an invoice from MSD to reimburse eighty-five percent of the funding that we got for those students, because they would have been in our enrollment count the year before. So that's how that works. We have a summary sheet, as you can see, which has the budgeted numbers and the revenue versus expenditure. And as I pointed out, I think the reason why there is a differential between the percentage of revenue received in the fourth quarter and the expenditures relates to the fact that the MSD revenue, which is such a large part of our revenue, we only have one payment out of six versus the five, six coming in earlier quarters, and the expenditures for the general fund, as I pointed out, there were certain rather large accruals that we record at year end as part of the closing process, including the COVID testing, reallocation to the general fund, debt service, things like that. So now's the time I ask if you have any questions. I'd be happy to offer what I know, and we'll look up whatever else you might ask.
Well, as I said, you've been very thorough. I don't see any questions, but also I know there's somebody from the capital side for schools that's going to present, so maybe we'll have more questions after that as well. But thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Maureen Gersberg. I'm the Director of Facilities Planning and Real Estate for Baltimore City Public Schools. I'm standing in for Dr. Washington today. Today, I'll be reporting out on capital spending and requests. At this time of year, we typically focus on CIP project requests. However, this report's going to cover everything so that we get a holistic landscape of what's going on. We're going to walk through facility conditions and investments, current funding sources, the summary of projects, and looking forward. At the beginning of any presentation on capital projects, we like to present the current landscape of maintenance and capital funding at City Schools. When measuring against industry standards, City Schools underfunded by over two hundred million annually when you look at both combined capital and maintenance. When you look specifically at capital, there is approximately a hundred million dollar shortfall of what we should This slide shows CIP funding and local funding for neighboring jurisdictions. You can see that other jurisdictions receive more funding than Baltimore City, specifically local money. Montgomery County has just over two times the number of students that we have, and yet they receive almost five times more in local funding. For Howard County, you'll see that they have less students than us, but still, their total amount, when you look at the CIP funds and their local funds, it still exceeds Baltimore City by about twenty When we make decisions for our CIP projects, we look both at the physical systems as well as district priorities. So we might have a roof that's ending the near, it's nearing the end of its life cycle, and we'll know about this. It's in our computerized maintenance management system, and so that'll come up, and we'll know, okay, we need to put in for this roof because it only has two years left on its lifespan. And so that's an example of like a physical system giving us a very specific flag. We also have district priorities that we layer in when we develop our CIP list. So an example might be, we knew that roof on Utah Marshburn needed to be replaced, but we also knew that as part of our annual review, there had been a decision that the building was going to be surplus, so we would know not to put that roof in the CIP for that year. So this is a snapshot of our funding. The majority of our funding does come from the state. I've included on here the most recent amounts. However, the colors are very important because the blue shows are the amounts that we receive annually every year. The green were multi-year funds, and then the yellow were just one-time infusions. So for our capital and program, we historically were receiving about thirty-five million from the state. Governor Moore released additional funds last year, so we got an extra eleven million, but we don't know if that's going to be a new pattern or if it was a one-time deal. The Healthy School Funds, that was, we received forty-five million in the latest fiscal year, but the year before that, it was twenty-five. That's also slated to expire in FY twenty-six. So after this year, we'll have one more year of Healthy School Funds. Amount is TBD, and then that's going to end. Built to Learn, that, oh, sorry. So Built to Learn, that's a one-time infusion, and I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but we're focusing that pot of money on the renovation of three high schools, City College, Western, and Poly. Updating the systems on any of those is so expensive that this is a really good opportunity for us to modernize those facilities. Pass Through Grant is also a one-time cash infusion. Non-state funds, we have our local funds that we receive from Baltimore City. Esser Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, that was our COVID money. So there was Esser one, two, and three. We were able to utilize Esser two and three. We primarily did bathroom renovations and health suite upgrades, and we were able to touch seventy-three schools in the district, and those are, have expiration dates of September twenty twenty-three and September of twenty twenty-four of when we need to spend the money by. And that was a total of about one hundred and ten. Twenty-first Century was approximately one billion for Phase One, and then they were able to refinance the bonds to get an additional one hundred seventeen million for Phase Two, which is covering the renovation of Frederick Douglass Campus, which will be a co-location for Frederick Douglass and Joseph Briscoe Separate Public Day School. So again, I really want to emphasize the timing on those funds up there and the fact that we're able to rely on the state CIP and local funds for that annual cash, but the rest of them do have termination dates or have already been done. Next. When we develop our CIP list, we start with the projects that were not funded from the CIP the previous year. We then incorporate projects that might have multiple years of spending, so are major projects. We then pull out anything that might be covered by a different pot of money, such as Healthy Schools Funds, and then we add in projects that have been flagged within our CMMS system of, okay, that needs a new roof, that needs a new HVAC system. So we lay that in. And then we look at it from the lens of our district priorities. Are there specific schools we want to focus on? Are there specific schools that might have been involved in a decision of our annual review? So let's say it might be a school that's receiving students as part of a closure. We take that lens to our list to ultimately prioritize it and determine what is on there. One of the tools that we use to look at it from a district perspective is our Community Conditions Index, which looks at past investments in Baltimore City. And so we like to look at this with our proposals overlay, just to make sure that as we approach this, we're looking at it from an equitable lens. So looking forward for our systemic projects, we have the Esser projects that I had mentioned. There's seventy-three of those, the bathroom renovations and health suites. There are twenty-four Healthy Schools projects. That's that pot of money that's going to be ending in FY twenty-six. Those are primarily windows, doors, and HVAC. And then there's the thirty-nine CIP requests for systemic projects that we're putting in this year. So that's pending IAC approval. However, I want to flag that the amount that we're requesting in total from the IAC is about one hundred ninety-one million. They gave us forty-six million last year. We know we're not going to get the full bucket, but the need is there, and we also do like to build in flexibility in case we are able to get creative with some of our funding in the pots to see, because oftentimes, there's certain requirements for certain pots of money, like it needs to be a certain type of project. So we like to build in that flexibility, but again, the need is there. Next slide. So these are our major projects. They are listed chronologically on the right there. We have two two-story modulars coming online at Matt Washington and Marie Gi Faring. We have the two remaining Twenty-first Century buildings from Phase One and the one Frederick Douglass for Phase Two. We have four CIP replacement or renovation projects, and then the four Built to Learns. And then we, and then the, sorry, then two pending CIP requests for major projects that we're including in the CIP again this year. I'm going to walk through the major projects now. These are ones that have received CIP funding previously. Marie Gi Faring is in Brooklyn. There's, we know Baltimore City population has decreased. However, we have certain demographics that are increasing. Our English learners are definitely in that group that is increasing, and so we're seeing a lot of overutilization at those spaces in the city. So Brooklyn is definitely one of those, and Marie Gi Faring has been overutilized for many, many years at this point, and so they're receiving an annex. It's a church that we are renovating and putting in addition on. Furly Elementary had significant structural issues, and it also had an increasing EL population that is underway. Northeast is going to be a renovation for the Vanguard Middle Program, and Armistead Gardens, also very large EL population. It's been overutilized for many years, and we're going to be renovating and putting addition on that. These are from other sources of funding. I think everyone is aware of City Springs. We actually just are about to receive design funding for that, and the anticipated opening date of that is twenty twenty-seven. So that'll be some Built to Learn, and then also from the city. Frederick Douglass, as I mentioned, is Phase Two of Twenty-first Century. They're actually moving into swing this coming summer. City College and Poly Western are both Built to Learn. These are those Phase One Twenty-first Century projects that are wrapping up. Cross Country's going to be opening to kids January twenty twenty-four, and Commodore is going to be opening in their new building, August twenty twenty-six. These are two major projects that are part of our high school plan, but as you're aware, the Built to Learn pot was quite limited, so we couldn't cover all the high schools that we needed to. Ben Franklin is probably just several blocks from Marie Gi Faring, so that's that part of the city that's seen a huge EL increase. And even this past year, we had to install portables at the site just because there's not enough space. We submitted for that project last year, and it received a grade of a B, which means the IAC agreed that the project was needed, and oftentimes, that can be a battle unto itself. But they agreed the project was needed. However, they also know they only give us thirty-five to forty-six million each year. And so when you look at our existing CIP projects, Armistead, Marie, Northeast, Furly, and the fact that we only get small chunks of money each year for those projects, they didn't feel confident that the amount of money that we asked for in the CIP would be enough to get these projects completed within a certain amount of time. So Ben Franklin received a B. Edmondson received a C. As I said, we do a lot of work with the, sorry, the Inter-Agency Commission on School Construction. That's the state entity that we work with for getting CIP projects approved and for funding. So they gave Edmondson a grade of a C because they didn't agree that the need was there the way it was for Ben Franklin, and part of it is because in that part of the city, we have a lot of excess seats. And so that's been one of the things that we have continually received pushback from them in terms of getting projects approved. Edmondson would allow for the two-building campus to consolidate to one building, which would be a huge efficiency for the district. But again, the excess seats, we got pushed back on that. But even then, even the most that we would have gotten out of it would be a grade of a B because there wasn't enough money that's going to be given to us from the IAC to be able to fund all of our current major projects, the systemic projects and these projects. So we're still putting them forward in this year's CIP to at least get the approval on them, so that when there is money, we can hit the ball, hit the ground rolling. And that's it.
Well, thank you very much. I do have one question first. The summary of projects piece, I'm glad that you have the socioeconomic indicators and this composite index, and it's kind of alarming when you start looking at the areas of low investment, and you can kind of see in East Baltimore and in West Baltimore as well. Can you spend a little more time talking about those projects requested, and to what extent those conditions are driving whether those projects go ahead or not, and the timing on that?
Yes, I wouldn't say that those conditions are driving them going ahead. It was more of a looking at the count of our projects within those areas to affirm that, okay, these are, we're making sure that we are addressing our schools that have been historically underserved. And even then, it gets a little tricky because that map on page sixteen, it's, so the major projects are the stars, but then the triangular ones, they are systemic projects. Systemic projects can have huge cost ranges. So it might be a million-dollar door project, but it might be a twenty-one million dollar HVAC system that we're doing at Booker T. So it is a little more, I think, nuanced than that, but it's really, we look at the counts and locations and the costs being spent in those areas to make sure that we are taking an equitable approach for our CIP list.
Got it, got it. And can you, again, I know you kind of mentioned it, but just the difference between the systemic and then the historic?
Yeah. So there's two types of projects, systemics and major projects. Systemics would be a single system within a building, so the roof, the HVAC, windows and doors. A major project is an overhaul, so like you're fully renovating a space, or you're putting on addition. It's the whole package. We will sometimes have multi-systemic projects, so it might be, it might make sense to do fire alarms and HVAC at the same time, because you're kind of touching the same spaces, and it's a little more efficient. We'll have multi-systemics, but until you're getting to like five or more systems, it's going to be in that systemic category versus major project.
Got it. Any questions from the committee? I don't see any at this point. Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just on that same map, I just wanted to understand, this is, and what timeframe, because I represent City College. There would be a star there for City College, I think, because of the major overhaul, right? Are you considering that as a systemic?
So this is CIP specifically. City College is going to be funded with Built to Learn.
Oh, excuse me. You're right. Okay, excuse me. All right. So that's a totally different category.
There's a map in the appendix, though, that has those on there.
Okay, great. Thanks. And then when you're looking at low investment, high investment, that's just your socioeconomic indicator that's not relative to the City Schools investment?
Correct. So it looks at six indicators, percent family poverty, median household income, percent vacant properties, percent adult population with no high school diploma or GED, percent of households with no access to a vehicle, and violent crime rates.
Is that written somewhere?
It is documented within our CE FNP, which is online, but we can also share that with you specifically afterwards.
If you don't mind, just the map and then that list, that would be cool.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any public testimony, so we're going to then recess this hearing, and then we'll go to the next one, where you'll be. All right. All right. So the next hearing we'll be going to will be Resolution 21-0062R, American Rescue Plan Quarterly Oversight Hearing. So again, we'll just go ahead and turn it over to our ARPA.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the committee. I'm Shamaya Kearney. I'm the Chief Recovery Officer for the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs. Pleased to share information with you about our finance and performance for fiscal year twenty-three. Next slide. I first want to start off with just a little bit of background about ARPA, just to kind of ground us. So ARPA was signed into legislation in March of twenty-one, which provided six hundred and forty-one million dollars to the city of Baltimore through the State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. Eligible uses of funds included premium pay, public health, negative economic impacts, broadband and water infrastructure, as well as revenue replacement. ARPA was signed into law with the goal of expediting the country's recovery from the negative health and economic impacts of COVID-19. And while the country is now functioning with a degree of pre-pandemic normalcy, the impacts of COVID-19 were anything but normal. Unemployment was at an all-time high. Families were struggling to identify their next meal. Schools and daycares were closed, interrupting interaction and learning. Businesses were closed and income lost. Limitations on the number of people who could be gathered in one place at one time, even including funerals. We wore masks. We wiped down groceries and packages and before bringing them into, before bringing them into our homes. And we watched the news in horror as countless Americans died, as evidenced by the death count ticker that was often present on news stations across the country. Accordingly, the Scott administration prioritized Accordingly, the Scott administration prioritized programs and services that would aid Baltimore city residents in recovering from and mitigating further health and economic impacts of COVID-19. Next slide, please. So before getting into most of the financial information around ARPA for FY23, just want to ground us also in some key facts. So we provided a annual council report on June 30th, 2023. We identified at that time that the expenditures data that was in that report were for May 2023. We often function with a one-month lag time on financial data. In addition to that, we noted that the presentation that we have today includes data as of July 31st, 2023, unless otherwise noted. As Director Larson spoke to earlier, the books for FY23 have not yet closed, so we should consider obligation and expenditure data as preliminary. Also, just to make sure that we're clear on what we mean about obligations and how we're calculating that, we see obligations as information that is included in Workday, and that calculation includes purchase orders, supplier contracts, and standalone invoices that were approved in Workday and the city's financial system of record. The calculation also includes funds that were spent on salaries and personnel costs. In most cases, committed amounts are budgeted across multiple fiscal years. Next slide. So this is just more of a graphic depiction to make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of terminology around commitment, obligation, and expenditures. So commitments are the total investment across all fiscal years. Obligations are contracts, purchase orders, and standalone invoices as approved in Workday. And then finally, expenditures are those amounts that were charged to ARPA accounts. Next slide. Also, just a reminder around roles and responsibilities. The Recovery Office was stood up with the primary purpose of monitoring, tracking, and reporting on ARPA expenditures and performance. It is our city agencies that are responsible for implementation of ARPA-funded projects. Next slide. So now diving into more of the financial data. Of the obligations and expenditures across the ARPA portfolio, I would note that we probably have about 86 or so projects that are funded through ARPA that we are tracking and following. We have obligated about $236 million as of July 2023 and expended about $120.2 million as of the end of fiscal year 23. Next slide. In this slide, this is more of a graphic presentation that demonstrates the cumulative dollar amount of obligations, I'm sorry, of expenditures by quarter. And this is for the calendar year, not the fiscal year, so I want to make sure that I did I point that out. You'll note a decrease in the amount of obligations between Q1 and Q2 of calendar year 23, but that decrease reflects a difference in our methodology for calculating obligations. We originally started off calculating obligations by the approved budgets for each fiscal year for each of the projects. We then determined that that wasn't as true of a statement of obligations. What is truer is what is in Workday, the supplier contracts, the purchase orders, as well as the invoices. And so we made that adjustment, and that is what reflects that dip in between those quarters. So again, just a change in methodology. Next slide. In Slide 8, we provide a overview of all expenditures for city agencies. And while I walk through the expenditures, I walk through them more detail, slide by slide, for each of the individual agencies as we move on, but this table just provides an overview, so that you can get a quick snapshot and summary of our expenditures. Please note that the executed agreement with BICIT was for $35 million, and this table reflects a $30 million commitment. You'll note that the table, I'm sorry, the note to the table indicates that the reason why you see that small reduction in the summary table is because of funding that was provided to Enoch Pratt for Digital Equity Initiative, so we wanted to make sure that you understood the difference there. Next slide. This is also an overview of expenditures by quasi-government agencies. For a number of our ARPA-funded projects, fiscal agents are used to administer and implement those projects, and the expenditures reflect funding that the Recovery Office has paid to those fiscal agents for project administration and implementation. In cases where the program design included payments to beneficiaries, the Recovery Office advanced all funding. An example of that would be the Economic Recovery Fund, where we use multiple fiscal agents such as the Baltimore Development Corporation, Family League, and a few others. Next slide. This slide provides an overview of expenditures by organizations as it pertains to nonprofits. Expenditures reflected in this slide include the Cash Campaign, which is implementing the Guaranteed Income Pilot Program. We have also previously noted our collaboration with Morgan State and the University of Baltimore as our university partners, who are providing services around performance evaluation and research. And finally, the Recovery Office directly awarded funding to 45 nonprofit organizations as of July 2023, and that data reflects the combined commitment amount and expenditures for all of those directly awarded nonprofits. Next slide. So now we'll walk through individual slides for individual agencies. So for MEMA, MEMA has expended, sorry, next slide, thank you. MEMA has expended about 40.8% of its ARPA funding. And the public service delivery relates to the Language Access Program, which includes activities such as translation of documents and developing language access plans with city agencies. The Vulnerable Communities Line includes funding for benefits navigators that assist residents with limited English proficiency to navigate and access health and social economics, health and social resources. Next slide. Slide 13 indicates information on projects funded by the Department, funded by ARPA for the Department of Planning. This includes Clean Core, which provides funding for equipment and salaries for work teams. Food and Security Line Item, which includes activities such as produce box distribution, online SNAP benefits, and BIPOC-focused Farm Alliance Training Program, which helps to increase local food production. For Middle Neighborhoods, that agreement was just approved by the BOE on September the 6th, so you don't see any spend related to Middle Neighborhoods. That would be, and also for the Inspire Century Housing Program. Those are housing incentives that will provide grants for existing homeowners for improvements and to developers to rehab or develop vacant properties for homeownership. And that is also a project that we expect to get off the ground in FY24. We are still working with the Department of Planning on that project, and again, expect for execution in FY24. Next slide. For the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, you'll note that there's been spend in every one of the project cost centers. We will note that here, the spend for youth works was a little lower than expected, but mostly due to low spend in 2022. But participation greatly improved in the summer of '23. And then in addition, ARPA is also funding a year-round youth works internship program and a youth works academy, so we expect for spend to increase in that area. Next slide. For BCHD, I think what's important to note, if you've heard reference to FEMA reimbursement as a part of this hearing, as a part of the previous hearing, I'll note that we took a FEMA-first approach with BCHD, making sure that we were fully leveraging FEMA for anything that could be reimbursed before leveraging ARPA funding. And so as a result, you will see lower spend for BCHD than one might expect. So we created a budget that would ensure that once FEMA ended, that there was appropriate funding for activities such as contract tracing, vaccinations, and testing. But we do know that there are modifications that can be made to the budget, and so over the coming months, we will continue to work with BCHD around budget modifications, but also factoring in the fact that we could see spikes during the winter months, and also that there could be the chance of other variants. So we want to make sure that we're being mindful of that as we're talking with BCHD about any potential modifications to their budget. Next slide. For OPI and digital services, so this, ARPA funding funds the digital services team, which is a team of four. They were fully onboarded as of March of 2023. They're working on projects such as working with BICIT in product management and redesign of the city website, also redesigning of the special events permit application process, and currently working with the Office of Emergency Management to identify ways to better communicate with seniors during emergencies. And then the Office of Performance and Innovation is also just to augment some staffing. Next slide. For the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, we're at nearly 14% spend. You'll note that they're spending in every one of the project cost center categories. There are two items that have a slower rate of spend, and that's around GVRAS transitional employment, as well as subsidized employment. I'll note that MONZI and Moet are currently coordinating to provide traditional employment funding through the Higher Up program, and once Moet's current funding for Higher Up is depleted for the subsidized employment program, which is referred to as Behind the Wall. There was a late start to the program, and so program logistics, such as payment mechanisms and the number of individuals that might be able to participate in the program, impacted the start of that, the timing of the start of that program. Accordingly, we reduced the budget based on the number of participants, and so that budget has been reduced by about $5 million. And then also, there's some, a little bit of accounting error, and we talked a bit about some of the Workday challenges, but we do know that there are duplicate supplier contracts in the system, one needs to be canceled, and we've talked to the agency about that, and so that is part of the reason for, well, that's one of the areas that we know that we need to make a correction on in the system. And then I would also note that MONZI has a number of subrecipients, they're partnering with a number of community-based organizations and have entered grant agreements with those organizations. So while you may see a lower rate of spend, there is a higher rate of obligation because of contract and grant agreements with those organizations. Next slide. For DHCD, DHCD is at about a 9% rate of spend. I'll note that there are several line items where you don't see any spend, and we'll talk about that individually, so I'll start with the impact investment area. So while the spend rate has been a bit slow, there are related costs that have not yet been entered into Workday, and so we expect to see some additional funding or some additional requests through Workday related to acquisitions that are in progress, as well as some of the soft costs that are related to appraisals and title reports and things of that nature. And so we expect a significant, well, I should say about $3 million or so of additional costs related to some of that acquisition work. There's also additional obligations related to stabilization and demolition that we're also expecting to come through Workday, and so we will start to see funding spent in those individual categories. For Park Heights, the top line there is that development was delayed due to a combination of financing challenges. And so there, the developer initially submitted an application to the state, which was not funded. That required the developer to submit each residential project separately, and so again, because of some of those funding challenges and delays is why you don't see spend related to Park Heights. In addition, we know that construction costs are continuing to escalate that are potentially creating gaps, and so we are keeping an eye on this particular project. To Voli, the top line there is that there is no spending because of some challenges around environmental review and delayed progress, and the recent notification that the project area is part of a national register historic district. And so I don't proclaim to know a lot about environmental reviews and historic districts, but we do understand that that triggers some additional reviews, and so DHCD is currently working through that process. For HUBS, for the top line there is that we executed an agreement with DHCD in July of 2023, and we know that they have about 2,000 applications that are in the pipeline, and so we are, and they are in the process of finalizing prioritization, and then we'll execute contracts with HUBS partners and grant agreements with the applicants. Related to wealth building in Middle Neighborhoods, the top line there is that the DHCD prioritized some of their other capital projects first in order to be able to start to get those projects in the pipeline and identify and confirm their funding sources. So this was always intended to be a project that got off the ground in FY24, and as such, we are in the process of working with them on, to execute their grant agreement. Next slide. Oh, I probably should have said that, I forgot there were two slides, apologies, thank you. For BICIT-BDE, so you'll note that there are a few project or cost centers that there has not been any spend to date. While there have been no funds spent for a couple of those areas, we know that BICIT is working with multiple offices within city government to identify existing contract vehicles that would help to expedite some of those programs and some of those projects, and to develop RFPs to secure contractors. In addition, there's about $7 million in obligated funds for fiber installation and maintenance work that, again, is not yet showing in Workday as an expense, but we know that it's obligated because there are contracts. There's also been some additional funding that's been obligated to contracts to secure network hardware, and so we expect for expenses, for expenditures against those contracts to start as well. For Phase One Broadband Access, that funding will be granted to CBOs for public Wi-Fi capital projects and designing spaces where people can safely use public Wi-Fi. And for Digital Equity Fund, we're pleased to announce that the first round of awards totaling about $1 million was announced this month, and so we expect to see charges against that cost center as we start to pay out some of those CBOs that were awarded. Next slide. For BCRP, their cost centers are broken down into capital and admin costs, so there are a number of projects under BCRP, which include recreation centers, pools, playgrounds, athletic courts, and trails. BCRP utilizes a combination of funding sources, and so as such, in some cases, trying to secure those funding sources in addition to ARPA has been challenging, so there's been slow spend to date on some of those projects. There's also been slow spend for playgrounds. That in part is due to us making sure that some of the contracting vehicle that they wanted to use was compliant with ARPA, so it took us some time to do that review and work with legal on that. But we have gotten, started our first playground that we broke ground on just earlier this week. Yes, the days are blending together now, thank you. And then in addition to that, there were equipment contracts that were approved by BOE in July of 2023. And we have four out of our eight athletic courts that have been completed, and so work will continue on athletic courts. The middle branch surveying work has been completed, and then we know that Glen Falls is with procurement right now, and so we expect for that to move fairly quickly. Towanda and Colstream Pools are preparing to bid soon, and LA is reviewing the bid packet, so we expect to see progress around those pools as well. And then the Greater Model Pool is in design, and we expect for it to be ready for bid in the winter of '23. So making progress, even though you don't see high rates of spend for BCRP. Next slide, please. MOHS is at 1% of spend. I would note that the bulk of ARPA funding is for shelter acquisition. The administration is actively working to obtain and purchase shelters, and so that is an active negotiation that we hope will conclude sooner rather than later. In addition, for the Housing Accelerator Fund, that is to provide incentives to developers to create permanent supportive housing. The Notice of Fund Availability was announced on September the 6th, and a pre-proposal conference was held on September the 14th. The application submission in November, and awards will be made in 2023 or in early '24. So again, while there are, there's no spend, we are actively moving and getting that, those projects off the ground. Next slide. For DGS, so there are a couple of things to note about, about the DGS project. So for the City Hall and Northwest Action Center projects, we are working with DGS right now to get those things finalized and moving. We know that that, that those things will move fairly soon, and expect for things to start in February of 2024 after the bid process ends. For BPD Fleet- For BPD Fleet, you see no spend even though there's an obligation because we don't pay until the vehicles are actually delivered. And so you will not see spend reflected until those vehicles are delivered. And we expect for them to be delivered in two tranches, one in October of 2023 and the other in March of 2024. So we are actively working with DGS to make sure that we are tracking and making sure that those vehicles are delivered in the timeframes that were shared with us by the supplier. For DPW, that spend will occur when vehicles are delivered as well. And we expect for the first batch to be delivered in December of '23. Next slide. For DOT, we're actively working with DOT on a finalized project list for ADA, as well as for street resurfacing and sidewalk reconstruction repair. So we have not yet entered grant agreement, but we are working through that process and also getting a finalized budget for those projects. Next slide. For DPW, also just a 0% of spend, but again, good reason for that. So we already talked about the fleet, load packers, which are being purchased through DGS. But we shared it here just so that you know that that commitment is for DPW. In addition to that, we have other charges that are related to operating expenses for cleaning and resident services and then proposed capital improvements. So we've been working with DPW on a finalized list of locations. We have come before, the council before, to talk about some of the life, health, and safety improvements that the agency wanted to make and that ARPA would fund. And so we are very, very close to a finalized list and expect to be to agreement and getting those projects well underway in the coming months. Next slide. HABC is at 7.3% of spend. We executed an agreement with HABC and allocated funds for the housing phase. So that includes PSO and making some funds available to them for their development team. There are some housing gaps that have been identified in some of these projects. And so we're actively in communication with HABC around some of those gaps. And we know that we've provided about $2 million so far towards the Perkins Somerset Old Town Development. And again, are continuing to just keep the lines of communication open as inflation has posed challenges for many of our capital projects. Next slide. And then lastly, just Enoch Pratt Libraries. And so they're at 7.2% of spend. Much of the funding is around repairs for HVAC at libraries, which is through DGS. And so start and completion construction, we're anticipating in December of '23 for estimated start and then completion in April of 2025. There are about five or six libraries that are on their list. And so they're actively working to start, get those contracts underway. A contractor has been selected and the contract is under review by law. And so we're hoping that work will begin shortly. That's it for Enoch Pratt. And then the last slide is really just to show kind of the flow of funding. Next slide. To show the, the flow of funding from city agencies versus a nonprofit organization that doesn't necessarily have access to Workday. And so this is kind of showing how we, how we pay our city agencies and nonprofit organ, or non-city organizations, which includes nonprofits and some quasi's. Happy to take questions.
So thank you for a very detailed presentation. You addressed a couple of, one of the questions I was going to ask, and you maybe can go a little bit further. But some of the wins or some of the successes. And I saw you'd mentioned the Greater Model Pool, that's very near and dear to my heart. But then also Clean Core, I was at a job fair for some of our Clean Core folks this afternoon. And so there's some, there's some good stories come out of it. But if you could share some of that, and just for everybody's edification, I'm actually going to turn the random hearing over to our Vice Chair, Councilwoman Costello, but please proceed.
Great, thank you. So as you mentioned, we, we do have some successes, even if you don't hear about them as much. So we're very excited about the number of individuals that we've been able to hire through our Clean Core program. We are providing employment opportunities to many people that need them. We're excited about the work that we're doing through Moed. We're excited about providing job opportunities to youth, and not just during the summer, but year-round. We're excited about the food pantry. We're excited about the work that the Department of Planning is doing that is providing, distributing food to people who still need it. Again, as I mentioned earlier in my remarks, while it does feel like we are post-pandemic and on the other side, there are still real people that are struggling. And so we're very happy to be able to provide opportunities for people to be able to pick up food that needed. We're excited about the BIPOC Farm Alliance Program, where we are adding to our local food supply. We are excited about a lot of things related to, to ARPA because it's near and dear to our heart. I would be remiss not to mention my team that's here, because I didn't do so in the, in the beginning of my remarks, who work day in and day out with these agencies to understand their needs. We have to be as nimble as the, as the pandemic. And so we get calls every day to talk about the challenges and barriers and how we might be able to mitigate them. I am grateful for every single one of them that takes their, their time, talent, and treasure to try to make ARPA flow as smoothly as possible, even with some of the, the challenges that we're still continuing to navigate, right? And so we're excited to be able to, to work with our agencies and to really progress and move Baltimore City forward. So I could stand here for the rest of the time and talk to you about how excited I am about the wins. But I think you understand, you get the picture, that we're really excited about some of the great work we're being able to do through ARPA.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Can we zero in on any grant funding from ARPA that may be in jeopardy of, of being forfeited if it isn't spent? Can you go through the, the rules of that? And if we're on track to make sure all of those dollars are expended?
Sure. So all funds have to be fully obligated by December 31 of '24 and fully spent by December 31 of 2026. And so while we have had, well, I think it's important to talk about implementation in the sense that the law was passed in March of '21, the office was set up in July of '21, and we issued the very first grant, well, a grant or award in November or October, November of '21. But it still takes time for people, for our agencies to be able to stand up programs and processes. And so while the, the rate of spend has been a little bit slower than anticipated, we do expect for the rate of spend to pick up this year because many of these programs have now been stood up. And so now we can start to move towards execution. I would be remiss not to note that the city already had its own level of challenges around procurement and finance, as well as capacity and staff. Those things have not changed. So even with the addition of some grant services positions that has added some capacity to agencies, it is still a challenge to move some of the, the projects and programs forward. In addition, ARPA is not a nimble grant. There are a lot of rules and regulations that require us to be able to be in compliance with 2 CFR 200 or the Code of Federal Regulations. And so there takes some time for us to be able to make sure that, that any contracts that are being used are compliant and things of that nature. And so if you ask me if we're on track, my answer right now is going to be yes because we are continuing to look at all of these different projects that are funded by ARPA, and we are working with our agencies to actively mitigate any barriers and challenges to obligation and spend. We will continue to do so for the foreseeable future until this office sunsets. And so again, we are working, we talk with our, with our agencies, in some cases biweekly, in some cases monthly, to make sure that we're having conversations about what needs to, what needs to move and how we can be helpful. So my answer right now is yes, but we are continuing to track.
Thank you. And so we've obligated 236 million, which means we have another 405 million to obligate?
Not a math major, but I, I trust you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Where do we anticipate we'll be at by the end of this calendar year on the obligations?
Hard for me to say, but I, but we do have some staff capacity around projections. And so we can demonstrate potentially what the spend rate would need to be in order for us to meet the mark. But I don't know that answer off the top of my head, but happy to do some analysis around that and get back to you on that.
Yeah, that would, that would be great if you could be prepared to address it at the, at the next oversight hearing.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman McRae.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The mayor, the mayor recently announced a direct care, $2 million grant for direct care health work is, which I fully support. We have also done a guaranteed income pilot through the cash campaign, which I fully support. I wanted to know, is there, are there any programs through any of our agencies that are specifically for Baltimore City workers to provide support for their needs? Whether it is specifically, specifically for our workers? We have contractors, we have employees who are having issues with rental assistance, having issues paying their mortgage. And you, you stated something earlier that hit me as well, like, look, we may, we're not out of a, out of a pandemic and how it impacts people. So I just wanted to know, have there been any programs that has, have specifically been put forward for our city employees? And I say that knowing that I've had a city employee, as well as a contracted employee, who work directly in this building, who need assistance, who have reached out to my office? So did we have any, any programs that were specifically for city employees?
So there's, there's two that I'll mention. One is the Vaccine Incentive Program. So you might remember that at the height of COVID, where we were having real challenges with city employees and being at staff capacity in certain agencies, we rolled out the Vaccine Incentive Program, which at the tune of about $10 billion. And so we provided funding to any city employee who was willing to, to get the vaccination. In addition to that, most recently, we rolled out the Home Buyer Incentive Program. And so that is going to directly benefit Baltimore workers, Baltimore City employees, who are interested in buying homes. And to, I know that one of the things that's near and dear to your heart is middle neighborhoods. And so we are, the map that was shared indicates that you receive funding based on the typography. And I might be stepping out of my lane a little bit, but the typography. And so based on, you get more money for a home depending upon where you purchase a home. And so that is both an opportunity to provide our city employees with the benefit, but also looking strategically at how do we address some of the middle neighborhood challenges that we've talked about in previous hearings? And so really proud of that program as well.
Director Kearney, I know you gave us a slide that says what you can do and what you can't do. But I do see one representative from Al, from the administration's office. And what I would like to highlight is that I want to make sure that we're also prioritizing our city workers. And if, it's a ton of money. They've been dealing with a lot of these issues. And again, I'm getting, and I know my colleagues are likely getting these calls as well. Our workers need support. So hopefully you can take that back to the right agency to make sure that we're putting forward plans for rental assistance, specifically for our workers. Help with their mortgages if they've been battling things throughout this, throughout this pandemic for our workers. Food insecurity issues for our workers, especially the ones on the front line who have been showing up every single day. Thank you. Actually, one more question, mister.
Oh, Councilwoman McRae, I was just going to say that some of the programs around food insecurity, as well as rental assistance, are available to Baltimore City employees. Now, we don't necessarily have a specific program, so I, I hear you in terms of creating something that is specific to city employees. But just wanted to make sure that we know that, that those programs are available to our, our city employees.
I appreciate you, Director Kearney. I just had one, one additional question. And it was a previous hearing a long time ago. And, but our previous CAO, he did highlight that the Recovery Office would eventually transition into a monitoring capacity as the years progress. And what I wanted to know was, what are your current monitoring and outreach strategies for, say, our grant recipients? I know that we are tracking a lot of things with UB and also Morgan State University. But at this time, what are the current monitoring?
Sure. So just to give a little bit of context about subrecipping and monitoring. So for the Recovery Office, we held trainings with all of our awardees to help them understand what their responsibilities were to comply with the Federal Code of Regulations. We also have the project managers meet with our grantees. Again, sometimes biweekly, sometimes monthly, just to provide, to get information on challenges and barriers related to implementation of their programs or their projects. In addition to that, we have a job aids website that we have provided to our awardees to provide them with templates and tools for appropriate management. We provided training around internal controls, as well as again, compliance with 2 CFR 200. We also have a contractor, or I should say, our consultants that we work with, where, who helped us develop the risk monitoring plans for each of our awardees. And so based on your risk, on a risk level, that determines how often we review financial and performance data. We have, if you are low risk, you provide data to us on a quarterly basis. If you are medium, high risk, you provide performance and financial data to us on a monthly basis. And we review that, we look for any anomalies or any inconsistencies in data. We hold meetings with those organizations if we identify any inconsistencies in data and make sure that we understand the reason or rationale. In some cases, it's just a misunderstanding of what they needed to provide. In other cases, they really do need some one-on-one handholding around what they need to report to us. And so we do that as well. Right now, we're also in the process of doing what we're calling our, our monitoring activities and preparing corrective action plans. And so based on the data that organizations have provided to us, we've reviewed that information, compared it to the compliance requirements of 2 CFR 200, and have identified areas of correction. We will hold meetings with those organizations to let them know where they need to make corrective actions and what they need to do to satisfy, to meet the corrective action. And then we will continue to monitor to make sure that they have actually implemented those corrective actions. And so we are starting that process now with organizations. And we will go through all of our direct awardees to do that.
Just as, just as a quick follow-up for that, is there a certain percentage of, of organizations that maybe, may have been flagged for, say, high risk or inconsistencies? That you guys noted where you had to step in and just provide additional support?
So I would say that where we've had to provide additional support wasn't necessarily based on the risk level. It was based on the data that was provided to us. So there, so we did an initial data collection that identified what the risk level was. And we shared with our organizations that based on what they provided, their risk level could change. So if, if we are observing that they are in compliance, that they are doing things well, and they were medium or high risk, that they could potentially drop to low. You could be low and based on information that you provide to us that is inconsistent or not in compliance with 2 CFR 200, you could be raised to medium or high. And so we have maybe a third of organizations that fall into the medium to high risk category. But again, I would say that those, those categories could change based on what they provide to us. But we do have some low-risk organizations that are not necessarily red flags right now, but we do see things that could indicate potential non-compliance. And so we are also flagging those for those organizations.
Thank you, Director Kearney. Councilwoman Ramos, you're up next.
Thank you. Just following up on Chairwoman's questions. Your, Director, you're notably more optimistic this time than last time about the opportunity to make sure that we're not leaving any money on the table. And so could you tell us a little bit more? You've got those categories, and hopefully every so often we'll see those because I think that was very helpful to see the categories in which agencies fall in there. And this, the way that you presented it here was also very interesting because we could see the percentages. So that was, that was good as well. But also just, again, it sounded to me you were a lot more optimistic than last quarter in terms of making sure that this was going to get done. And I'm assuming that's because your team has worked with each agency or there's been additional information that you didn't have last time. I obviously am concerned about DHCD, and I've got some specific questions that I'll ask offline in the interest of time. But, you know, so just kind of getting your sense of, you know, the difference between last time and this time.
So if the Chief Recovery Officer is not optimistic, then who else will be, right? And so yes, I, I am optimistic, but it's also because I think we have a commitment from our leadership that if we continue to see low rates of spend on certain projects, we will move to reallocate funding. And so I've been very vocal with this committee and publicly have said that we do not want to leave a dollar on the table. This is a city with far too much need to do that. And so while it might be difficult decisions to make to move. And so while it might be difficult decisions to make to move money from certain projects and from certain programs, we may need to do that in order to be able to make sure that we expend all of the funding. And so we are beginning that analysis and determining with our leadership where we might be able to make some adjustments. We have a commitment from the CAO who sits in with us and who we talk to with a level of regularity about where we are with projects. And so she's, also has shared with agencies that if there is not some additional movement, that we would be looking to reallocate funds. So I am optimistic because, again, there's no shortage of things that we can spend money on. It's just getting it done by the, by the deadline. That is the thing that concerns this team the most. But we would, of course, choose projects if we had to do any reallocations where we would be able to move that money quickly because we don't want to leave a dollar on the table.
And when are you going to make those decisions? At what point do you say we've got to move this money, otherwise we're not going to spend it?
So I, I think in fairness, we want to give our agencies an opportunity to do what they can. As I mentioned, our timeline, this is really only one full year of implementation for some program, for some agencies. And they have multiple programs and projects that they're trying to work on and stand up. And so we do want to give them some additional time to be able to make movement on some of those projects. But I think we will probably be looking at, at early next year to do a real firm analysis to identify, you know, go or no-go.
Right, because we have to have the obligations by the end of the year.
That's right. And we want to make sure that we give any agency that we would reallocate funding to, they also need to have time to get contract vehicles in place and do things like that. And so we want to be mindful of that as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Colleagues, any other questions? Director, oh, Dominic.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Can I just go back one second to address Councilwoman McCray? So Councilwoman McCray will follow up with the Department of Human Resources, but we do have the Employee Assistance Program. They do offer some resources for financial difficulties as well as some other programs that we have. So we'll follow up and get you that information and make sure if there are other programs that Human Resources offers, we'll get you that information. You're welcome.
Colleagues, any other questions? We have public testimony, Mr. Mark, counsel. As soon as the director gets done, if you could come up to the, to the podium, please, and thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, counsel. My name is Mark, counsel. I'm legal organizing housing our neighbors. I just got a couple of questions, well, maybe one question, and it's probably can't be really be answered probably today or whatever. But the money that far as ARPA funds, being representing and speaking for the homeless population, I really would like to know when is this money going to be, I really would like to know when is money going to be spent in, in the community. Would like, also would like to see this money spent and not be, any of the money be turned back into taking away from us because we have a lot used for this money in the homeless population. Also, it's a desperate need for this money in the homeless population. We can read just the fact that y'all stated that this money has been used, this, that, and everything else, but we don't see this money has been used. And we would like to, far as the homeless population, we would like to see this money used in certain, certain places like, like far as getting the people off the, I mean, getting people off the streets and getting people off the benches and get people out of the streets. The shelters and the hotels is not really the answer for the homeless population. We need to do something better. The money is here, the housing is here, and it needs to be something, needs to be done real fast in a hurry. As you know, that people are actually dying out here, and we are really counting on this city to help these people out here, the ones that helped build Baltimore City, the ones that helped voted for Baltimore City. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And appreciate your comments, and those are certainly comments that should be directed or that, that should be addressed by the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. I think the role of the director and her team here are to, or is to help process the funding to the various agencies based on the commitments that, that the mayor has made. So Director and Dominic, we definitely like Mayor's Office of Homeless Services to be prepared to address these concerns in the, in the very near future because they're the agency that's responsible for actually spending the, the money and making those changes. Is there any other public testimony this evening? Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming out. Seeing as there's no other public testimony, we're now in recess. Thank you all.